I'll now call to order this meeting of the Moore County Board of Education. This is a regular business meeting on Monday, March 8, 2021. We will also be holding the public hearing on the 2021-2022 budget. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, the board entering to closed session to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11a1, a3, a5, and a6, and General Statute 115c-319, and to consult with the board attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11a3, including a discussion of J.M. Thomason versus Moore County Board of Education, Moore County Superior Court case numbers 21, CVS 1051 and 1052.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Levy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. We will now enter closed session and we will return for open session at 6:30. Thank you. I'll now call to order this meeting of the Moore County Board of Education. This is a regular business meeting on Monday, March 8, 2021. We will also be holding the public hearing on the 2021-2022 budget. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, the board entering to closed session to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11a1, a3, a5, and a6, and General Statute 115c-319, and to consult with the board attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11a3, including a discussion of J.M. Thomason versus Moore County Board of Education, Moore County Superior Court case numbers 21, CVS 1051 and 1052.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Levy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. We will now enter closed session and we will return for open session at 6:30. Thank you.
Call back to order this meeting of the Moore County Board of Education for a regular business meeting. It is Monday, March 8th. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. However, Mr. Hensley has requested that the item 4B, Proclamation of April, as month of the military child, be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the, as an action item. Mr. Hensley, is it still your desire to do so?
No, it can remain on the consent agenda.
Thank you. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Denison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Holmes. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. The motion carries seven oh. At this time, we are ready for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I believe we have students from Sand Hills Farm Life tonight who are going to lead us out.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
My name is Cohen Sekeg from Sand Hills Farm Life, and I'd like to talk about my moment of inspiration. My moment of inspiration is when I ran in cross-country. It was hard and changed my life. It hurt to run, and I gave up half of the time, but then I kept practicing, and sooner or later, I was able to run it. At the end, I was really happy, and I learned that if you're determined and put your mind to anything, you can do whatever you want. Well, mostly whatever you want. Thank you.
Thank you to Kinsley and Annabeth and Cohen for joining us. And Ms. McPherson, thank you for bringing us your students from Sand Hills Farm Life. Ms. Thompson, if you might lead us through a moment of silence.
If everyone would join me in a moment of silence at this time, please. Thank you.
At this time, I will move through our recognitions part of the program. Although we are back in person here in the boardroom, we do not yet have our recognition folks here with us. We'll look forward to that sometime, hopefully in the nearer future. Tonight's Engage Inspire Succeed certified staff honoree is Beth Michelle Jones from Pinehurst Elementary School. Pinehurst Elementary is delighted to recognize Ms. Jones. She serves Pinehurst Elementary as an exceptional education teacher. This year, she has taken an entirely brand-new exceptional children's team and served as the leader the department desperately needed. Nominated by a colleague for this honor, the Pinehurst Elementary staff know that she has kept everyone organized, focused on excellence, and making solid decisions for children. Most importantly, Ms. Jones has provided a calm and nurturing professional environment for her colleagues to grow. To say that she has been an effective leader is an understatement. She has served her colleagues with heart, which provides an effective learning environment for the students. The entire team has benefited from her leadership in a department that needed clarity, organization, and care. Thank you, Ms. Jones, for being a living testament to the Pinehurst Elementary School vision of relentless learning for all. Congratulations, Ms. Jones. Our Engage Inspire Succeed Support Staff Honorees are, it's actually a team, and it is the custodial team of Southern Pines Elementary School. This team is composed of Arthur Gibson, Greg Poplin, Kim Brannan, and Charles Ingram. The Southern Pines Elementary stallion family would like to recognize their amazing custodial team. Mr. Gibson, Mr. Poplin, Ms. Brannan, and Mr. Ingram. These four have worked tirelessly this school year to ensure that Southern Pines Elementary students and staff were safe and that the buildings were clean and sanitized. They have gone above and beyond to facilitate the move to the new school, all while being short two custodial positions. They take great pride in the school and work diligently to keep it looking shiny and clean, and will always greet you with a smile. These four individuals work together as a team to maintain the building and keep everyone safe. They do whatever is needed to get the job done. We are truly blessed to have them as part of our Southern Pines Elementary family. Congratulations again to Mr. Gibson, Mr. Poplin, Ms. Brannan, and Mr. Ingram. And we have our Engage Inspire Student Succeed student honoree from Union Pines High School this month. His name is Luke Oakley. Luke is a true representative of what it means to be a Viking at Union Pines High School. As a sophomore, Luke's positive attitude and energy radiate the hallways and classroom every single day. Even wearing a mask, Luke's face offers a welcome greeting and genuine smile. What's most impressive is that Luke's vibrant smile is infectious, for no matter if he's talking to an administrative assistant, cafeteria worker, custodian, teacher, student, or someone brand-new to Union Pines. His compassion and kindness are extended to all. In the classroom, he is a leader to his peers. Luke lends a helping hand by volunteering to run any errands or completing tasks for his teachers. As a classmate, he offers kind words of encouragement to his peers to brighten their day. Luke's daily contributions, hard work, and positive attitude Luke's daily contributions, hard work, and positive attitude make all of us at Union Pines, staff and students alike, want to be better. Congratulations, Luke. And that ends our recognitions for this evening. We'll move now to the program highlight. Dr. Grimacy.
And Madam Chair, I'll defer to Ms. Donna Gephardt and Ms. Julie McPherson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Grimacy, members of the board. I am delighted today to have a special, special person to recognize, recognize efforts from Sand, uh, from, excuse me, Sand Hills Farm Life. Ms. McPherson has been her first-year principal at Sand Hills Farm Life and has done an amazing job. I have enjoyed walking around with her with the engagement and the excitement. Even students would come in, and she walks in a room to come up to her to say, hey, let me show you what I've done on my latest assessment. Ms. McPherson is an amazing principal who leads her school and her school improvement team, and she's going to share with you the highlights from Sand Hills Farm Life.
Thank you, Ms. Gephardt. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Grimacy, and members of the school board. I'm thrilled to be here tonight to give you a glimpse into what it means to be a Trojan. The theme for our presentation tonight is engagement through RACE. This past summer, the leadership knew that we needed to pull together as a staff more than ever to support the needs of all of our students, each other, and our families. Our new instructional vision, which reflects our core values, came out of these conversations. This instructional vision is Trojans Together, One Step at a Time. You will see in our presentation how we narrowed down this vision into four steps, which forms the acronym RACE: Relationships, Actively Monitor, Captivate, and Environment. As you view our video, see if you can pick up on the following highlights. Students repeating our Trojan expectations each morning during our morning announcements. Student-to-student math talks, which has been a best-practice focus from our school improvement plan. K-2 writing samples and phonics instruction with Letterland. Our year-long staff team-building exercise around one word. Then, the grand finale with one of our fifth graders during a STEM activity coding a drone to make a basket. With so much going on in the big world around us, here is a peek into what's going on in our little world. Welcome to Sand Hills Farm Life, home of the Trojans. My name is Julie McPherson, the principal here at this awesome school, and we are so glad that you are going to be a Trojan. I am going to take you on a quick virtual tour of our building, since we can't do this in person like we normally do. So you are now in the lobby. This school has such amazing history. The school that was originally here began in 1859. Yes, and now you are going to be part of that history, and we are glad that you're here. Let's begin with your morning announcements. Today is Tuesday. It's Wednesday night, and we are all set for another great day here at Farm Life, so if you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A and L, A and L, A and L, together, yes, yes. Remember your manners. O, own up and take responsibility. J, join in and help your team. A, always do your best. In, meet in camp.
The teachers are really nice, and they're, they, I like how they cheer when it's like a pretest, and everyone is like stressed out about, like, the North Carolina tests. They always, like, cheer you on and be like, don't stress over it. It's not that hard, and they just, like, persuade you on. Um, so, yeah, they're really nice. I like being back at school better than being virtual, because at home, there were many distractions, and it's easier to focus here at school, and I can actually talk to other students.
So, it was nice being back at school, because I got to talk to all my friends. I only had a couple of friends I could talk to during then. Also, I get to go to recess, which I didn't get to do a lot, because there's nobody home. Um, I also, we also get to go to specials, which is nice, because I enjoy doing stuff like PE and like that.
Data talks are a way for us to check to make sure students are learning what we're teaching. After giving the CFA, we work together as a team to analyze our results. Where are the students now, and did they meet their goal? We can look at how to close gaps and what trends we notice across the grade level. This helps us to look closely at our instructional practices and to ensure we're truly meeting the needs of all of our students.
This summer, our school improvement team met. We knew this year would be filled with unique and difficult challenges, but rising directly to meet them is what our school family does best. As a team, we listed what we felt would be imperative to having a safe and successful school year. Out of the conversation emerged the words "safe environment," "captivating," "monitoring progress," and "building relationships." Eventually, this submerged into our new school vision: Race. Relationships built through open, positive communication. Actively monitor ongoing progress through the PLC process. Captivate students, family, and staff remotely and in person. Environments that promote safety, productivity, and creativity. This vision has lit our path this school year: Trojans Together, One Step at a Time.
1,596 divided by 13. You can do partial product. You can do standard algorithm. Actually, you know what I do? You can do one of those three.
I need partial quotient, and I added 100 first. So, 100, 1,596 subtracting 1, 1,300, and I subtracted that, and I got 296. And 13 can go into 260, 20 times, and I subtracted that. And 13 times, and I subtracted, and I got 36. And 13 times 2 plus 20, and I subtracted that, and I got a remainder of 10. And I added all of the, um, the answers up, and I got 122 remainder of 10.
What is, um, 3 times? How can, how many times does 3 go into 12?
30 times.
4 times. 4 times, yeah. Yes, okay. 3 times?
4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10.
Is 12. So, what, 3 groups? Yes. So, I'm going to really try to focus.
May Jimison is a big dreamer. She is a great dancer. May Jimison wanted to be an astronaut. She even wanted to learn about science. May Jimison is a great woman.
Who's this? The ACT family. So who makes up the ACT family? A and T. But who is the A and T? Very good. Who makes this family? The AND family. And who makes up the AND family? Very good. And what does the AND family say? AND, good.
My word was simplify. I decided to do simplify, because I think one thing I learned during the quarantine and staying home was that it's important to do things to figure out what's important to you and do that well. We were limited, but in some areas, that was comforting to me, to be able to simplify what I needed down to what was the most important. And I think that I've carried that over into my work as well as my family life, to just try to focus on what means the most, and that's worked for me.
After reflecting, I chose blessed to be my one word. At the beginning of the school year, I felt very blessed to have been at this wonderful school for 31 years. Sand Hills Farm Life is very special to me, my kids, and my grandkids, whom have all attended here. But as the year went on, my word became even more special. Two weeks before Christmas, my elderly parents both tested positive for COVID-19. My mom recovered fairly well after a week, but my dad got pneumonia in both lungs and was very sick. With my family pulling together and lots of prayers, my dad slowly recovered. To have pneumonia at 93 and recover is a miracle. Thank God, my parents survived COVID. I know I am truly blessed beyond measure, and my one word means so much more now.
Feel great, and I'm going to win.
Yes.
Thank you for your time tonight. As you can see, great things are happening at Sand Hills Farm Life, and we are certainly moving, learning forward. Thank you.
We appreciate Ms. McPherson's leadership, as she is racing to the top, one step at a time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, and give our best to all those at Farm Life. It always is amazing to realize how old Farm Life School really is and the roots that are there. I know several years ago, you were doing a history day, and I took the time to go out and made the rounds with the kids, right down to the artificial cow that you were allowed to milk in the backyard of the school, because Farm Life School actually started as a school to educate farm children who came and lived at the school to learn these skills. So, it's got a marvelous history. Any comments or questions for our ladies on screen? I guess Farm Life is different now without mobile classrooms in front of it all the time, too. Thank you so much. Again, our best to all those of you out at Farm Life. We appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, we will now move on to the consent agenda. Entertain a motion to approve as presented. So moved. Motion by Mr. Levy, second from Ms. Thompson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries seven oh. All right, we now progress to the public hearing on the proposed 2021-2022 budget. For that, I believe we will go to Ms. Murphy. Maybe not that, Ms. Murphy.
We need Catherine Murphy, not Minnie Mouse. She doesn't have any helium in there, does she? Ms. Murphy, we need to try again. Yeah, we're still getting Minnie, not, not Murphy. Yep. Yeah, you need to, you need to check out and check back in. This exact, board members, this exact same thing happened during senior staff meeting this morning. I'm not sure what...
Can you hear me now?
We now have Murphy instead of Minnie.
I hope everyone enjoyed my imitation of Minnie Mouse this evening. Our first caller is Alexa Roberts. Ms. Roberts?
Yes?
You are live with the Moore County Board of Education.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, evening, chair, Carter, board members, Dr. Grimacy, Mr. Poplin, staff. Pleasure for your services to our community. I understand that time and the sacrifices that you made to serve on our school board and to come up with this budget and what this means for your family and for your job. Let me start by saying that I commend you for prioritizing the classified staff salary scale implementation. I know this is a big portion of the budget request again this year, and for the third year, I will say how important it is to ensure that classified staff are paid at rates commensurate to their service and are competitive within our county and also in nearby towns. While I am in full agreement with the $2.1 million ask to support the fixed cost and the implementation of the classified salary scale, I have a few comments related to other aspects of the budget discussion last week. First, I am not in favor of the per people expenditure method to build up the budget request. This is not a method that is used by the county or municipalities to create their budget. It is difficult to adequately budget for services by inhabitants or by students, because each person is different. Does each individual in Moore County receive the same amount of services from the county's more? No. Some use a senior center, some do not. Some need Birmingham building permits, and some do not. And looking at the county's last budget meeting, requests for additional funding by various departments came because of a tipping point. It had been reached, and services were impacted, and they want to make Moore County a better place to live and conduct business. They adjust their ability to provide associated services from time to time. They do not do this by a per inhabitant threshold. Why should the schools be held with different standards? Budgeting by student misses the unique nature of varying support needs of each of our students. Secondly, I heard concerns from some of the board members that there were not increases in the digital and capital fund. I agree with this concern. I want to remind the board members that in addition to the funds related to the sales of schools, there are four potential sources of funds related to the school's expenditures in the commissioner's hands that could meet these needs. The first three come from the funds that were approved by the voters in 2018. None of these require any further burdening on taxpayers. And these funds are: The bond premium. The sales of school bonds resulted in $10.7 million school bond premium. Most of that remains. What are the plans to use the rest of it? The interest on this bond sale. The sold bonds earned interest while they were waiting payments to the contractors. Are those available to fund school capital projects? Article 46, the quarter spent sales tax. A specific amount is budgeted for school bond debt service. Where does any excess go? Could it be used for school capital projects? The sales tax refund. All digital devices, materials, and capital equipment are budgeted unpaid for by Moore County schools.
Ms. Roberts?
But those purchases are channeled by the county to get a sales tax refund.
Ms. Roberts?
And those sales tax are not refunded to the school.
Ms. Roberts?
I would encourage you to seek assistance by a resolution between the board or some other measure.
Ms. Roberts, I have you on time. Ms. Roberts, I have you at time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ken, if we could show the timer. Okay, that's fine, I can do it on my phone. Thank you.
Thank you. The next caller is Lowell Simon.
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
You're live with the Moore County Board of Education.
Thank you so much. As many people have already said, I have no issues with the budget itself. My issue is with the drastic change in methodology. After years of complaining that the General Assembly has underfunded our schools, failed to keep up with inflation, and mandated unfunded expenses, why this board would choose to put all future school funding in their hands is beyond my imagination. The chance that a Republican gerrymandered General Assembly will continue to increase per pupil spending over the next 10 years is about the same as buying a win lottery ticket. The political reality is that Republicans will continue to hold majorities in both North Carolina houses for the next few years. To assume that public school spending will continue to increase after a presidential election and a partisan redistributing process is delusional. Over the last 10 years, the average increase from the General Assembly has been 1.8%. In two of the last 10 years, it has gone down. In five of the last 10, it has been less than 2%, and has been less than the average Moore County increase in 10 of the last 10 years. Over the last five years, it has been a whopping 3.24%. In that time, the county's average budget increase has been 5.2%. After years of trimming your ask and searching for savings, is there some way still in the system? Probably. Is it substantial? Probably not. Understand that you're growing weary of the annual fight for survival, but that is exactly what the opponents of public education are counting on. They have tried and failed to hand it over to privatization for more than 70 years. Turning over the county's school budget, the political machinations of Raleigh, make the entire school system partisan, and would require it to become involved in parts and politics in obscene and undesirable ways. All the needs, I'm sorry, all of the needs of Moore County students different than those of the state? Probably not. But will North Carolina continue to find ways to starve public education? Not probably, but absolutely yes. Thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you. The next caller is Ms. Laura McNeil. Ms. McNeil?
Yes.
You're live now with the Moore County Board of Education.
Great, thank you. Dr. Grimace, Chair Carter, and board members, I applaud your work on this budget. The $2.1 million is absolutely the right number to ask for. The Board of Commissioners needs to step up and make our schools a priority. Our classified staff has long overdue for a pay increase and a pay scale implementation. These employees are invaluable to our schools and have been a lifeline in the midst of this pandemic. But the per pupil expenditure funding model must be removed. By law, Moore County schools provide the PPE payout to the charters, but that's an after-the-fact accounting measure, and to continue to remain that way, the cost to educate a charter school student does not equate to that of a traditional public school student. Charter schools do not have to provide transportation, nutrition. They do not have to hire all certified staff, nor do they have to pay their staff the same. All students are housed in one building, thus keeping capital improvement costs contained. Equating them even in a budget model is erroneous and unfair. There's no way to make these systems equal, as they are run completely separately, differently, and with different inputs. To put it simply, a per pupil amount goes farther at a charter school. The only financial obligation the Moore County Board of Education has to the charter school is to come up with a per pupil amount and pay that out. The budgets and the money needed to run those schools are the responsibility of those schools' boards, and not the purview of the Moore County school board. Furthermore, reducing county funding to per pupil will hurt Moore County traditional public schools in the long run. If a charter school loses or gains 30 students, it all occurs in one state, and they can adjust accordingly. When Moore County schools loses or gains 30 students, it could spread over 30 students' classrooms at 22 schools. The fixed cost, i.e. the teacher, space, and support staff, don't change, so no funding will change. It's the county's responsibility to bridge the gap between what the state gives us and what we need to successfully and efficiently run our schools, regardless of the number of students we serve. In this free country, there are many families who choose traditional public education. In many cases, families choose Moore County for their excellent public schools. Those families deserve to have fully funded schools just because those families who choose charter schools do as well. Public education is not a business. Students are not widgets, and their individual needs are not line items. Capitalism should be taught in schools, not used to run them. Thank you for your work to keep Moore County a statewide example of excellence in public education. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, with your permission, I will read the written comments.
Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Rita Ray. I live in Whispering Pines with my husband and three daughters. We have lived in North Carolina Sandhills for more than 10 years. My husband and I both have busy careers. Our two older daughters are students in a Moore County public elementary school, and we are pleased with what we've seen. Both my husband and I attended strong public schools, and we fully expected that our own children would attend public schools, which they have. I have known since the time I was old enough to think about it that a good public school are good for communities and good for the children that attend them. I think we can all agree on that. Do you know what isn't good for traditional public schools, or for communities, or for the children that attend them? Describing them as failures and diverting money away from them and to charter schools. If you think there are problems in the traditional public schools, please take steps to fix the problems. Board members are in a position to do that. The county's traditional public schools will not be improved by consolidating bus routes, eliminating positions, cutting programs, inadequately compensating our teachers and staff, or offering an exit path for a small select group. I don't want an exit path, I want great traditional public schools. While I appreciate the board's time and energy, I am not impressed by the fiscal discipline summary that describes cost savings over the last several budget years. I hope to see an increased focus on improving the education and support programs for Moore County public schools. I hope you commit to support and expand worthwhile programs in our traditional public schools, and reflect that commitment in the next report. Per capita funding does not make sense for our community or our children, and I urge caution in diverting funds from traditional public schools. Businesses do not grow by cutting budgets. Neither do our traditional public schools improve by cutting budgets. We trust you to make our schools the best they can be. Thank you for your time and your consideration. The next comment was submitted by Karen Kent. First, I fully support $2.1 million requested budget increase to fund the classified pay scale implementation. Our schools have continued to run as well as they do because of these critical staffers, and no other group has been this badly neglected. Secondly, I strongly condemn the acquiescence to per pupil county funding as irresponsible and foolish. Does the county run on a per resident funding formula? This sterile calculation thoroughly disregards the reality of teaching actual students in actual schools with actual differences on a day-in, day-out basis. We know the dysfunction of these formulas from the state. Are we now choosing a formula because it is easier to sell or more easily understandable to certain people? That willful disregard of reality is irresponsible and dangerous to the mission of Moore County schools. Longtime students of funding cannot see this as a good idea. Where is the detailed analysis of the deleterious warehouse effect, or the sunting effect of unfunded state mandates? Where has the recognition of the crippling effect of unreimbursed benefit inflation gone? Has the institutional memory of all the formula-focused cuts since 2014 disappeared? If not, how could you consider voting for an equally destructive county scheme? If you don't understand what I'm talking about, then you certainly need to ask much more detailed questions to get answers. Certainly newer members with no more than a superficial understanding and ulterior long-range motives might think such a formula is adequate. But the reality of actual children requiring different care and attention across a whole spectrum of public students is about as well-established and commonsensical as it comes. The folly of pushing to open schools completely because of the deleterious mental health effects, while at the same time hinting that funding is excessive for physicians to support those students in counseling, nursing, military-dependent needs, social work, and an adequate number of teachers in classrooms, is the height of hypocrisy. Children are not cogs put on a manufacturing line with some business bottom line as the ultimate goal. This proposed formula is trying to squeeze real lives into a line item accounting trick in the quest for, at best, ease of understanding or, at worst, political expediency. We need professional, thoughtful, and nuanced direction for our schools. Please do not vote for the simplistic county funding formula. Please vote for the $2.1 million funding increase request to pay our classified staff The next comment is from Jessica Christie Bowman. I watched the budget presentation. I didn't understand a lot of it. I'm not good with numbers, but I have heard a lot of talk on Zoom from people who are really smart with budgets. They're worried. The Board of Education members are smart, too, smart enough to know that if the people who help you pay attention and work for our schools are worried, then you should be too. Sometimes doing the right thing is hard. Sometimes it's because you don't really, you don't know exactly what the right thing is. But if you do know what's right, and you don't do it because you want to make things easier for yourself, then you should be ashamed. In the first grade, I had a school psychologist. I don't remember her, but she was the first person who tested me. I was having a lot of problems. She helped me find out why I wasn't doing well. She found out that I'm really smart about some things. I can read and remember, and my mind is pretty sharp when I'm talking, but I can't do math at all. My mind works differently than most people's. This psychologist figured out how to help me. She did such a good job that we never needed to change my IEP even when I got older. She made sure my teachers understood my problems and how to help me succeed. I wish I could remember her because she is the first person in a long line of people in school that made me who I am. She didn't throw me away because I couldn't do math, and she made sure no one else could throw me away either. When you're thinking about the budget, remember all the kids like me. Don't think about cutting social workers and psychologists and nurses and counselors. They're just as important as teachers. I graduated and going to Sandhills, and going to Sandhills once the pandemic is over, and I can get a job because of my job training. I couldn't do that if I hadn't had all those people to help me. Kids like me cost a lot of extra money. Really smart kids cost extra money, too. When you decide to put a sub-dollar amount on each of us, that's the same, you fail us all. Don't do that just because it makes things easier for you. The next comment is from Alex Patty. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Grimace and staff. According to the superintendent's presentation, a significant portion of the fixed cost will allow Moore County schools to implement a new classified salary schedule to pay increased salaries of our classified staff. Other fixed costs include the obligation to match anticipated state raises and benefits rate increases. These fixed costs are to maintain current staff and programs. Note that there are no additional teaching positions proposed in this budget to help reduce class sizes in grades 4 to 12, with grades 4 and 5 continuing to grow while underfunded. The proposed budget also intends to establish the framework for a funding formula in conjunction with the county. This model raises concerns. State funds are typically tied to specific uses and spending. Local funding provides the flexibility to ensure appropriate staffing can be maintained across the 22 schools. The local funds provide an opportunity to fill the gaps left by the state's funding. For us to request the commissioners also move to a model that doesn't meet our needs will hurt our schools. Mainly, maybe not this year or even next, but it will over time. The need for equity in our schools became very clear during the redistributing process. Furthermore, the per pupil amount used to formulate the budget is a best guess. It is based on a four-year average of funding increases of 3.77%. If the state decreases the amount or fails to increase the amount to the projected level, it will have a devastating impact on our operations. The fixed costs at a single charter school will be less than that of the entire district. The funding model is therefore inequitable. Consider the school buildings and classrooms that may be impacted if the number of students go down, but the fixed cost to operate remains the same. I thank the budget committee for their work. The opportunity to look at details provides transparency, and it affords all interested stakeholders to do a deep dive into line items and better understand the budgeting process. It's interesting that fixed costs, salary increases, and charter expenditures included in the budget happen to work out to be the same numbers as when utilizing the per pupil funding allocation. I ask the board to support the total request of $2.1 million increase in local funds, but not adopt the per pupil model. Okay. The final comment is from Cheryl Christie Bowman. Good evening. I am not in support of this year's proposed budget by the superintendent. I appreciate the ask for increased dollars, but it concerns me that the money will only cover current costs and does nothing to add teachers, to address the overcrowding, and higher grades created by the NCGA's unfunded K4 class size mandate. Having said that, I understand the political reality in this county, and understand that asking for more from our county commissioners is a waste of time. It is because I understand political reality that I cannot support this budget as is. The per pupil funding scheme proposed by Mr. Hensley was copied straight from Alec with the intent of slowly moving funding away from traditional public schools into charters. Although this budget will not affect our funding immediately, it will give the commissioners the excuse they have been looking for for years to steadily reduce funding and privatize education. Passing the budget as is is dangerous for the future of public education in Moore County. I ask you to please consider asking for the funding increase but dropping the per pupil framework. And that concludes the comments for the public hearing on the superintendent's proposed budget.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. At this time, we will now move to public address to the board. I understand we do not have anyone in house. Ms. Murphy, do you have speakers?
I have three verbal speakers.
Thank you.
The first one being Kevin Lewis.
Yes.
You are live with the Moore County Board of Education.
Thank you. At the Board of Education meeting on February 8th, Robert Levy made the statement that Stonewall is taught in public schools on the same level as the Declaration of Independence. Where did you find this information, Mr. Levy? I have never heard this, and I don't believe this is the case of Moore County schools' curriculum when I investigated this. The Stonewall Bar Riots of 1969 in New York City, by the way, caused the creation of the Knapp Commission on Police Corruption, celebrated in the film Serpico because of the connection between the mafia owners of the gay bars and the payoffs to the police. The Stonewall Bar Raid also established the right assembly by LGBT people guaranteed under the Constitution, so it does have a connection to the Declaration of Independence. I am more concerned about the diversionary tactics by Mr. Levy and David Hensley in both the work sessions and the Board of Education meetings to discredit the mission and importance of public education. Mr. Hensley and Mr. Levy claim they don't have the time to read the lengthy reports. However, they have time to hold private meetings with filiboms without the full board's participation or public transparency. Then at the meetings, they claim ignorance of already decided decisions by previous and present board members. Mr. Levy even stated that he can't read the fine print in the reports. Those claims are disingenuous and irresponsible. I have never heard a lawyer yet who says he or she cannot read the so-called small print in a 21-page report. This is a filibuster tactic, and it always... This is a filibuster tactic, and it always shows Mr. Levy is unprepared for the meetings. Mr. Hensley also reveals that he hasn't read the reports when he repeatedly asks questions on discussed material and on one occasion stating that he didn't read the material. But Mr. Hensley has another forum outside the meetings. He has a Facebook page and radio time on which he expresses frustration at having to sit through an eight-hour meeting which should last four. At least four members do not hold up the meetings. It is mainly Mr. Hensley and Mr. Levy who ask poorly-prepared questions on purpose. On the radio, Mr. Hensley states that he visits schools which have gone from a D rating to an A rating without mentioning that the schools he visited are charter schools and not Moore County schools. Has he ever visited a Moore County school? He was elected, as was Levy, to represent the interests of Moore County schools and not charter schools. If Mr. Hensley and Mr. Levy are only interested in charter schools and have no interest in public education, they should remind, redesign immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. The next call is with Dr. Frank Hyatt. Dr. Hyatt?
Yes, ma'am.
You are live with the Moore County Board of Education.
Okay. Now, good evening, Board. I'll go ahead and start. A month ago, our North Carolina State Board of Education voted 7 to 5 to approve some new regulations for soldier studies in American history, some of which, if implemented, will have a serious detrimental effect on our students, here, our country, and each other. Here are summary regulation examples. So, one, a high school student must be able to distinguish the extent to which American foreign policy has advanced the interests of historically privileged groups or the interests of historically marginalized groups. Second, deconstruct the multiple perspectives of American capitalism in terms of absence, poverty, and mobility. And third, in one section, students are required to write on the contributions to our society by oppressed citizens, racial minorities, LGBT members, but given no correspondence requirement to describe contributions by Italians, Jews, or Germans. These changes seem influenced by critical race theory with its division of populace into oppressors and oppressed, often identified by their skin color, a habit we've been trying to avoid. Because of their frequent stress on what's wrong with America, ignoring its successes, the new changes are not in keeping with the majority opinion of our parents, who wanted children taught to live in a great country, the land of opportunity so many people would love to live in. Students are required by the new standards to evaluate and describe past wrongs done by the majority many years ago: slavery, Jim Crow suppression, or race rights by white people, but no recognition of the great progress in race relations in the past 50 years. Some universities now give in preference to black applicants. One, abortion. Many liberals like to say that no one has the right to tell a woman what she can do with her body. It's a current matter. Shouldn't conservative parents have the same right to privacy and not have their children indoctrinated by a state employee on whether or not their parents are racist oppressors? Considering a minority child, impoverished, living in a poor neighborhood, what better way can we help him fail than by telling him he's a victim? Instead, Jesse Jackson's advice to the students of an inner-city high school he visited once was right on. I may not be responsible for being down, but I am responsible for getting back up. Essentially, the new proposed standards have two serious errors. One, they stress our nation's past failures, most of which have been corrected, and ignore our many burdens. Two, they express the victims of opening us up for interracial resentment, which is not helpful to the society or the victims. It said the only attitude grandchildren will listen to is -- must be positive. If there's still some problems, let's try to fix them, black, white, or yellow. We're all Americans, the end of the world, lucky to live in the greatest country ever. Our children's view of their country and its citizens is at serious risk of negative for many years.
Dr. Hyatt? Doctor Hyatt, I have you at time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. Thank you.
Our final caller tonight is Lowell Simon. Just one moment, please. All right, just one moment. Mr. Simon?
Yes?
You are now live with the Moore County Board of Education.
Thank you. When I first decided to teach in 2007, I came in thinking that every student had a similar home life to my own children. They would come home, and Mom or Dad would ask, "What did you learn today? What did you have for homework?" What I quickly learned was that that was the exception, not the rule. Mr. Hensley and Mr. Levy have apparently fallen victims the same night you today that I did when I became a teacher. My first lesson came in an honors geometry class during my second semester of teaching. I had a student who consistently got 95 or better on tests, but had a C in the class. I looked into it and found it was because he never did his homework. I asked him about it, and his response changed me. He said, "Mr. Simon," I get up at 5:30 and walk half an hour. I get on the bus by 6:30. At the end of the school day, the bus drops me off at 4:30, and I'm home by 5:00. My mom leaves for work at 5:01. I take care of my two baby brothers until they go to bed around 9:00. By 9:30, I'm ready to get into bed so I can do it all over tomorrow. Much to the chagrin of my colleagues, it dawned on me that homework wasn't all it was cracked up to be. The most impactful thing that MCS did for the future was when Principal Robin Lee packed all of us into a couple of school buses and took us to see how many of our students were living. On that first trip, we went to a neighborhood called Riverbend near Woodlake. What I saw that day affected me deeply and permanently. Thankfully, it had been dry the last few days because the buses still had trouble navigating the lengthy dirt roads those families lived on. In rain or snow, those roads would be thick mud or ice, and no bus would be able to get into these neighborhoods. That meant the kids had to walk the half-mile exit of the bus stop and be there by 6:00 a.m., even in winter, and ride an hour in a cold school bus to get to first period of time. Those were some dedicated kids. Mr. Hensley and Mr. Levy seem to believe that all Moore County students live in Pinehurst McMansions, like they do, or that all Moore County students live inside the barely three miles that separate the Hensley and Levy homes. They fail to see that they live in privileged communities with less than 3% of their neighbors living below the poverty line, while many areas of Moore County have an excess of 20%. They wrongly believe that holding up charter schools as models of how to improve our public schools is logical. A simple look at the graphs in my handout shows you why this is a false narrative. Mr. Hensley and Mr. Levy are convinced that any child's problems that don't occur between 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. Monday to Friday would interfere with a student's ability to succeed, whether in the classroom or in life. They can be forgiven their adherence because they never spent any serious time in a classroom. They never had to build the relationships it takes to get a student comfortable enough to share their inner insecurities. They never had a teenage girl crying uncontrollably and walk out in the middle of the lesson and then have to send other students to go check on her and make sure she's okay. They never had a young boy hold back, and she's the only person they believed cared about that.
Mr. Lowell?
That's the one at school and not be seen for dead.
Mr. Lowell Sarn, I've got your time.
Really?
Yep.
Your timing is running much faster than mine.
The YouTube is about 30 seconds behind. I've got you at 3 minutes and 28 seconds. All right, thank you.
That's Catherine. Thank you.
That completes public comment for this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
Madam Chair, if I might, please.
Yes, sir. If a speaker has a handout for the Board, normally, if we're in person, the speaker brings copies and hands them out to Board members. In this forum, Mr. Simon sent a document to the clerk in advance to be distributed, and the best way we could think to do that that was as close as possible to the public meetings that we have was that Ms. Potter hit the send button for the email when the speaker was speaking. So, you have -- he referenced a handout, and so what we decided to do was just to, instead of sending that to you earlier and you being confused by that, we sent it at the time he was speaking, just as though he had handed it out. If any Board members have any feedback on a better way to do that, we're happy to do that, but given tonight's rather unusual format, we thought that was the best -- most appropriate way to do that, would be most like reality if that were the case. So, he referenced a handout, we've sent it to you, and we submit that in that way. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. All right, we'll now move to Board action items. Item 7A, the Board of Education Legislative Priorities. I believe we're off to Mr. Dennison.
Yes, ma'am. I have included all four items that were included in my original proposed agenda to the Legislative Committee, but were not included in the agenda that we proposed last week. I have crossed out three of the sections in the proposed agenda. One was ethics training for school administrators, fiscal accountability, and school construction capital, but kept the student support personnel item as part of the proposed legislative agenda for our action item today because it appeared that the majority of the Board wanted that one. I will make a motion to approve the legislative agenda. We'll then, after it's seconded, allow for anyone that would care to make any amendments to the proposed motion to either delete or increase the number of items that we're proposing.
Board of Order, Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Something coming from a committee, I don't believe requires a motion. Am I correct?
That is correct. All right, so we would now open the floor for discussion of these matters. It doesn't require a motion, Mr. Dennison.
Even though there were changes from what the committee proposed to what the motion is?
We're still going to have a motion. It just doesn't have to come from a committee before discussion.
Oh, okay.
We will have a motion to adopt when it is -- when we have narrowed them if we need to.
Get away.
Can I also ask, did you give us a copy today? Was this today?
Yes.
It was attached to the bottom of the executive summary. You're welcome to have my copy if you'd like. I had printed one out.
Is this it?
No. Mr. Levy, it's this.
You had it printed out.
You would have had to print it out. You're welcome to my copy.
Madam Chair, if we could ask whoever is presenting, if you can increase the size so that we could see what's on the screen. Thank you.
So, Mr. Dennison, the question is, the items in red are what you changed from what came out of the committee, correct?
Correct, but I left them on there in case anyone wanted to, you know, say that they want them on or, you know, so that they're all together now.
Understood. Thank you.
I am pleased to see the item on student support personnel up in the priority list. I think it's something that we cannot avoid putting on our priority as one of our priorities. It is very essential to the services to our students, and given the upcoming changes within the mental health formats that are coming from the state, we will simply be better prepared than we already are if we continue to highlight the need for these Are there other comments about the legislative priorities?
Can we scroll through those, please? Really emphasis on the red.
Mr. Eklund, is Ms. May our scroller tonight? Okay, thank you, Ms. May. The Board's interested in seeing any of the text that's in red.
Am I correct that the only thing that's in this proposal which is different is the school support personnel?
Correct.
Are there additional questions or comments?
I don't have any questions, just the comments of what has been determined to be priority. I think we all have talked about and pretty much agree that our classified staff, we need to try to get them increased to a minimum wage from a state level. And also, we've talked about the formula for our accountability for our schools, and I think it's important that the growth of our students is taken into account instead of just one grade test. So, I'm glad to see those things there.
Seeing no other comments, is there a motion?
I make a motion, Madam Chair, that we approve what's presented by Chair Dennison.
I second.
All right, motion by Ms. Thompson, second by Ms. Caldwell. All those in favor of approval of the legislative agenda as presented by the committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We'll now move to the second reading of new and revised policies. Mr. Levy?
Yes, these are the same new and revised policies as we dealt with on the -- did we have a first reading?
Last week.
Last week. I explained them last week in the work session. They seem to be rather routine. I did point out that our resolving of conflicts, our personal resolving of conflicts, does not take away our right and our duty to inform the superintendent of any problems and to make sure that we have the ability to do that. With that, I would turn it back over to the chair and ask that it be approved.
All right, from the Policy Committee, Mr. Levy, that be a motion on your part?
Yes, so moved.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the policies upon second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Thompson. Is there further discussion or questions? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the approval of the policies as presented this evening on second reading, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries 7-0. We'll move to the third item on our Board action list, which is the plan for return of grades six through 12 to full-time in-person instruction. Dr. Grimace. Oh, dear. And they're beaming in. We okay, Mr. Eklund? All right, thank you. Madam Chair, I'd like to defer to Dr. Locklear for just a couple of brief updates since the Board discussed this topic last week. Dr. Locklear, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Grimace. Madam Chair, Board members, good evening. Last week at your work session, I presented a plan to transition grades 612, those students to Plan A in-person instruction five days a week. This was based on Senate Bill 37, an act to provide access to in-person learning for students in grades kindergarten through 12, which was vetoed by Governor Cooper on February 26. Since the school board's work session on March 1st, the Legislature was unable to overturn the governor's veto. However, staff remains committed to the plan to return grade 612 students to full-time in-person instruction within 15 days, once it is allowed by law or an applicable authorization by the governor. And we're certainly available for any additional questions the Board may have. Thank you.
All right. Are there questions or comments as this proceeds?
I just have one. If -- does this mean that if something happens before we have our next board meeting, this gives the superintendent authority to go ahead and plan for the 6 through 12?
That's the intent of the recommendation, Mr. Dennison.
Correct. Thanks.
Additionally, I did read the superintendent's note to us, and that note suggested that we might become a school district as part of a pilot project that was under consideration by the General Assembly. I would hope that that would happen. If we cannot get all of North Carolina to go along with fully open schools, at least that local bill would allow our school district and other school districts to do the same. So, I would urge the Chair to support the superintendent's position, that we be made part of that pilot program should it pass the General Assembly. we be made part of that pilot program should it pass the General Assembly. And with that, I would move that we adopt the superintendent's recommendation.
The motion has been moved, is there a second?
Second.
The motion is approved by Mr. Levy, seconded by Mr. Dennison. Are there questions for Dr. Grimacy or any concerns or questions about the motion?
I just actually had one. For some reason, let me just move this up, I don't know if you can hear me. For some reason, if it was to happen over spring break, would you still need the 15 days after spring break, or we can get something rolling by the time the students leave class?
Thank you, Ms. Caldwell. Dr. Locklear and I actually considered that. There's reason, that's the reason for the 15 days. We believe that we could, if given, as I indicated last week, just enough time to make sure we could get bus routes out to parents, have them evaluate that. If there's any bees in the ointment, they can work with transportation. We figure we need about five days to do that. So the 15 days would be that which would enable us to work around either right before or right after spring break. We feel satisfied we could do that. Yes, ma'am.
Additionally, oh, I don't know.
Go ahead.
Additionally, I would hope, I know the superintendent has done this before, but I would hope that the superintendent and staff would be flexible for those parents who decide that this is a bridge too far, to allow them to go into fully virtual, if that is the case. Because I, you know, our goal here is not to force anybody to do something, but is to give the parents and the students a greater degree of choice.
Madam Chair, yeah, thank you, Mr. Levy. Yes, we've had a lot of experience as K through 5 has come back. There are parents, we find many of our parents don't necessarily want to go to the Connect Academy for good, but at that moment, they want to just wait and see. And so affording the flexibility to our principals to work with parents on a case-by-case basis has been very effective to date. And what we find is, is that among five different parents, there's five different motivations and five different sets of needs. And thus far, I think our parents and our principals and our teachers have worked very well. We would continue to do that going forward. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Grimacy.
Are there other questions? I will follow up with a letter of support for Dr. Grimacy's request that we be considered for a pilot program that would allow us to go back under a local bill that doesn't need the governor's signature. So hopefully, our children will get back into class sooner.
Thank you, Madam Chair, if I might. If I might enhance that just for just a second. Representative McNeil got back to me late in the week and said that to date, there's been no formal legislation submitted that would relate to a pilot program. However, there's been a lot of energy in the House and in negotiations with the governor's office, which could result in another effort at overturning, or could result in the administration adopting a different posture, particularly with the new CDC guidelines that have come out for post-vaccine COVID management. And so the recommendation is worded in such a way to afford the superintendent with enough flexibility that by whatever means that opportunity presents itself, be the opportunity to become a pilot, or an overturn of the governor's veto, or a change in the governor's approach, we'll be ready, whatever that authorization would be.
Thank you. All right, the motion is that we put into the superintendent and Dr. Locklear's hands the ability to transition schools back to full-time K through, for grades six through 12, once it is made a possibility by law or by applicable authorization. It's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Dr. Grimacy, is there a superintendent's report?
Madam Chair, the superintendent has nothing to add to the quite voluminous amount of information that the committees and the staff have provided to the board over the last two weeks.
Thank you. We'll now move to board comments. Mr. Holmes.
I have none this week.
Ms. Caldwell.
I do, but I'm not sure if I'm supposed to push the button, but can you guys hear me?
It needs to be green. Light needs to be green.
Okay.
Green is gold.
It just says push, so I wasn't. It's all new. Tonight, I wanted to talk about something that is near and dear to my heart. As many of you know, Bella's a therapy dog who has worked with Moore County Schools since 2009, passed away over the summer. Tonight, I want to bring sad news that one of Bella's teammates, Bonnie, has been diagnosed with cancer and has been taken in early retirement from Moore County Schools. If you were to ask any school-aged child, I bet they would know who Bonnie was. She can't even go to the store without being recognized, which, by the way, Bonnie does look. Bonnie was on Moore County Schools' pet responsibility team, reading tells program, summer reading program, and even her owner, Kristy Hartlove, created a program for children called Bonnie's Buddies. Bonnie has over 600 visits to the schools in Moore County and has been volunteering with her owner for nine years. Bonnie was also curious in class and took an interest in everything that children were learning. She never got tired of listening to children read to her. Through the years, Kristy and Bonnie worked with special needs students and even practiced, I'm sorry, even participated in the Special Olympics. Whenever there was a crisis and Bonnie was around, all she would have to do is wag her tail and that child would calm down. There was a boy who was blind and he was learning how to learn Braille. For two years, Bonnie sat with him, watched him overcome his amazing obstacle. Bonnie had such an impact on this child's life that he wrote a precious letter to her in Braille that Kristy will forever cherish. Needless to say, Kristy and Bonnie made an impact to the schools that she got to visit. I wanted to honor Kristy and Bonnie today for the dedication that they had made every day to Moore County Schools. Programs like the ones Kristy and Bonnie participated in do not cost a school anything, but in child's eyes, it's worth a million. I will post pictures of Bonnie and the beautiful letter Kristy emailed us last month on my Facebook page if anyone's interested. Kristy, I know you are listening, and I just want to say thank you.
What kind of dog was Bonnie?
She is a-
Or is.
Golden retriever. Yeah, both of you.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson.
Just to comment to Dr. Grimacy and his team for getting us set up here in our boardroom this evening. It was good being back at home this evening and seeing everyone, so appreciate your efforts in taking care of all the technical and always Mr. Eklund for what he does.
Yes, for beaming people in and out of outer space, yes.
Mini mouse.
And mini mouse, yes, right in from Orlando. Mr. Levy.
Yes, I just wanted to mention how optimistic I am about the future for our schools and to thank the superintendent for his hard work in bringing us to a situation where we can reopen our schools fully. I hope that the public has seen a very, very unified school board this evening. I think, I believe that most votes, if not all of them, were seven to zero, which is a great accomplishment for a school board like this because we have divergent, we're diverse. We have divergent opinions. We come from divergent backgrounds, but we're all here for the best education possible for the students. I hope, and I know that we're going to continue this work, and we're going to do it from fully open, five-day-per-week face-to-face instruction schools. And that will be one of the great accomplishments of ending this pandemic, especially here in Moore County. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dennison.
Yes, ma'am, I have two comments. The first comment is on the perception that the public has about the perpupil funding. I would like to point out that for years, the way that the funding for all students in Moore County is done, that when our budget is approved, there are certain amount, the same amount of money each month is given to us that we distribute based on the number of all the students in Moore County. So for years, we've been doing, we take all the Moore County School students and all the charter school students, divide those into the total amount, or the amount we receive for our budget from the county commissioners, and that determines the amount each student gets. And it's been done that way for years. What we're looking for is a way that, you know, before the county commissioners talked about 40% of the budget for us, we're looking for a way that we can determine how much money we can expect from the county based on the money we're receiving from the state. If the state money improves for us, then the county money will go with the same percentage. We haven't worked that out in detail yet, but that's the idea of it. And my next comment is, I would like to congratulate Dr. Grimacy and all our employees for the outstanding job they have done in protecting our students themselves during the in-person learning. We are very fortunate to be living in Moore County. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hensley.
I have no comments this evening, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it was my good fortune to stop by the Pinecrest Horticulture Greenhouse the other day. They were doing some fundraising and selling beautiful little succulent gardens, and I was able to purchase one. And so it reminded me that the month of February was CTE Month, Career and Technical Education Month. And I know that if you have been like I have and been often on Facebook, you have seen many of our career and technical education teachers featured on the Moore County CTE page. But we kind of let February go, come and go, and didn't say much about the program, even though it excels in providing our students with introductions to many, many types of jobs that will lead them to successful futures. I have to say, we have a most impressive group of instructors who bring within quite an array of experiences and talents. Under the direction of Amanda Dixon and her squad of very dedicated teachers, we have students at every middle school and all three high schools who are qualified to work on your car, to cook your dinner, to take your vital signs, and to milk your cows. In other words, we have Moore County students who are ready to enter the job force right now, or to move on to college and dig deeper into vocational areas that interest them. Although because of sheer numbers, not every program can be offered at every school, by far, most of them are. Programs range from the very traditional CTE options, automotive, carpentry, drafting, architecture, and masonry, to up-and-coming areas such as aquaculture, natural resources, computer science and networking, and drone technology. Personally, I'm glad to know that we have students eagerly training to provide health care to us through our biomedical technology and nursing programs, and to our pets through the veterinary assistance classes. We have students who will be able to fill our prescriptions through the pharmacy program, others who will supply us with support through the counseling and mental health program. And none of us will ever lack for a great meal, thanks to the training of our culinary arts and hospitality programs. To top this all off, we have students who will know how to market their products and to do the accounting necessary to make the books balance. I'm sorry to be late in doing so, but I salute our career in technical education programs, say thanks for all you do. All right, unless there is further business, we are going to adjourn into closed session again. We do not anticipate any business being enacted following closed session, but we will adjourn for that matter.
You're recessing.
Recessing to closed session, that's correct. That's correct. Any other comments or questions concerning that? All right, then, Mr. Eklund, we are-